The Quorum Mall trustees are present. Dr. Shepherd with certification given in accordance with provision section 551.002?
Yes.
That being said, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the invocation. Mr. Langley, would you lead us in a word of prayer?
Please rise. I, Hallelujah, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. Or we thank you for the opportunity to serve on this great board, in this great community, with the great kids that we have in this district. Or we thank you for the people that guide and oversee our kids each and every day. And we just ask you to watch over and protect each and every one of them through the rest of this year. We ask you to be with us in this meeting tonight, that we do everything that's right for this community. We thank you in Jesus's name, amen.
Please join us for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, you may be seated.
Next item on the agenda is any board member would like to make any comments? Would anyone care to? I'll just say I'm glad everybody's back from the holidays. I hope you enjoyed the time off and let's get ready to go. Dr. Shepherd, the superintendent briefing is next.
Okay. Our Hornet Success Academy is proud to announce that eighteen students are scheduled to graduate from the academy on January twenty-sixth. HSA will have successfully graduated over a hundred and fifty students since the start of the program in 2018. I do have to say that, Ms. Johnson's sitting out there, I see her in the corner over there, that is one of the things that I'm personally most proud of for our district, that that program was developed by our district folks and then approved by this board. It's been a godsend for a lot of kids that otherwise may not have graduated from high school, so congratulations to you and to the program and to those kids. On January ninth, that Huntsville High School cheer team held a successful showoff for families and fans in preparation for their five A D two U I L Spirit State Championship held in Fort Worth, Texas. They competed against seventy teams in their division and placed twenty-third overall. Their band chant performance placed sixth in the state with one of the highest scores the team has ever received. The team now prepares to head to N C A Nationals in Dallas, Texas this coming weekend. Huntsville High School welding teacher Jeff Sockwell and several HHS welding students were interviewed and included in a news segment that aired on K H O U Channel eleven news in Houston this week. The segment featured the Texas High School Welding Competition Series event, which was recently held in League City. Congratulations to our Mans Park Middle School principal Josh Campbell, sitting out there. Congrats to Josh on his nomination for the Life Changer of the Year Award. The Life Changer of the Year is a program funded and run by National Life Group and the National Life Group Foundation. His profile has been posted up to their website. Life Changer of the Year is an annual program recognizing K through twelve educators and school employees across the country. The program celebrates those who are making a significant difference in the lives of students by exemplifying excellence, positive influence, and leadership. H I S D Social Services accepted a check in the amount of one thousand sixty-nine dollars and fourteen cents, to be exact, I mean, that's down to the penny, from K Sam and the Lake radio stations as part of the monetary donations received from the Sixteenth Annual MASH Radio Toy and Food Drive. We appreciate their continued support of our students and families in need. The Huntsville item recently published a special issue of Huntsville Living showcasing difference makers in our community, and we're proud that no, we are proud that no other organization was featured more than Huntsville I S D. We're excited and grateful to see these folks acknowledged for their work on behalf of our kids. Several of them are in the audience tonight. Our honorees included Coach Jason Elliott, Winita Hall, and Sally Dowis, Paul Trevino, Marcus Forney, and Coach Rodney Southern. So since several of them are here, I'll ask them to stand wherever they are, and let's give them a round of applause. And finally, a few days ago, our community celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Huntsville I S D was well represented at the festivities with staff, students, and several from our Board of Trustees also in attendance. Special thank you goes to trustee Ken Holland for delivering greetings from Huntsville I S D and to Huntsville Elementary's Venetta Mills for co-chairing the committee that put the whole day together. That's my report, and as always, sting of Hornets.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognition. Mrs. Duncan.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, President Wharton, and trustees. It's my pleasure to present our recognitions this evening. Tonight, we will begin with a very special presentation for our Board of Trustees. January is School Board Recognition Month across the state of Texas, and it is Huntsville I S D's honor to join in the celebration to recognize our Board of Trustees for their service, dedication, and commitment to this district, our schools, and our students and staff. As Texas public schools continue to deal with the challenges of the past few years, school boards will lead the way. However, schools and communities succeed when everyone works together for a brighter future, parents, teachers, students, and school leadership. Serving as a link between the community and classroom, school board members are elected to establish the policies that provide framework for public schools. The Texas Association of School Boards Executive Director Don Troxel applauded the efforts of trustees in providing leadership and good governance so that school districts can focus on educating the five point four million public school children in their care. Texas school boards are critical to the success of students and the future of Texas, Troxel said. Boards lead their districts in the right direction, providing oversight, setting goals, overseeing the budget, and selecting and evaluating the superintendent. These volunteers serve for the betterment of our school communities and local school districts. Additionally, Texas Governor Greg Abbott issued a proclamation designated January twenty-twenty-three as School Board Recognition Month, and with his words and sentiments, he shared, "January is officially School Board Recognition Month in the state of Texas. To catch a glimpse of the Texas of tomorrow, we need only look into the classrooms of today." The proclamation also acknowledged the importance of locally elected boards. Individual schools and districts are answerable to the people who elected school boards. These boards set a vision for the district based on students' needs and community values. Governor Greg Abbott encouraged all Texans to acknowledge and recognize the thousands of school board trustees who voluntarily serve the next generation of leaders. From the Panhandle to the Gulf of Mexico, our school board members advocate on behalf of our children, strive to provide them the best possible education, and ensure that their needs and those of their parents remain a central focus. In doing so, they pave the way for a better, brighter future for our Lone Star State. The twenty-twenty-three School Board Recognition theme is Forward Together, which highlights the collaboration among school leaders, leadership, teachers, and parents on behalf of our students. Our H I S D School Board has certainly continued to move us forward together. This district is moving forward on the road to success thanks to our dedicated school board, working together as a team of eight. They are guiding us all forward together for the success of our students, staff, and this Huntsville community. We are officially under construction in H I S D. It was shared during our leadership retreat this summer that the road to success is always under construction. Life is beautiful because it is constantly changing and evolving. When we realize that the road to success is always under construction, we can truly get the most out of our lives. One of the main things that people define themselves by are their goals. When we want to improve our lives, we look forward to setting and surpassing those goals. The road to success that we have in our lives is always under construction because we are always moving forward. How fitting this year's theme is for our district. We are moving forward together as a district in many ways and on many levels, academically, athletically, artistically, and more. Forward progress is taking place now and for the future of this district, all thanks to this board's direction. Just look around this building and the one next door at the Bond Project Progress taking place for our champions to have a place of their own to excel and succeed in with a new athletic complex and a performing arts center. New facilities that our students, staff, and community can be proud of. Campuses across this district are being expanded and refigured so that we can meet our goal for necessary grade realignment and fewer transitions for our students. Very forward-thinking and goals to change that will result in what is best for our Hornets. We thank our board for staying committed to working together to lead and guide this district forward by doing whatever it takes to improve our district and facilities because the children we serve today and those we will serve in the future deserve it. Together, you have helped move us forward in all areas to success. We know that the decisions you make are important ones and not always the most popular ones. Many may snicker, but we know when you vote, you do so not lightly, especially when it comes to difficult decisions. We know that you are always keeping our best interests at the forefront. You spend hours at functions supporting our students and schools, along with untold hours spent in workshops and meetings, considering the budget, expenditures, programming, benefits, compensation. Your fiscal decisions have great impact on our district now and later. With bond projects, as the dirt turns, the mounds pile up, concrete is poured, and bricks are laid, it's all in the mix. Twix, you just, you make such a tough job, it's so easy. We hope by taking a little time tonight to spotlight and honor you, it will help you know just how much we appreciate each of you for your hard work and service to this district. While we get payroll email alerts letting us know that our direct deposit has hit, we know that you don't have a payday to look forward to. And while it's not a hundred grand, there is a special fifty-dollar Visa gift card in each of your goodie bags to help say thank you for building champions in Huntsville I S D. Next to your goodies, you will find a certificate of appreciation from Dr. Shepherd. At this time, please rise when I call your name so that we can recognize and introduce you to everyone. Mr. Trey Wharton is our board president. Ms. Tracy Stout is our vice president. Mr. Ken Holland is our secretary. Our trustees are J T Langley, Reese Owens, Ms. Kathy Schweitzer, and Dr. Karen Olson Williams. And of course, wrapping up the team of eight, Dr. Scott Shepherd. Please join us in one more huge round of applause collectively for our H I S D Board of Trustees. They all work so hard for us, but we know that there's nothing they love better than hearing from our Hornet champions, so please watch and enjoy this special video message from our students.
Look, I see our future. Look, I see it. Each year, we grow and one.
I see it too. We can make our own future, but we need help along the way.
Teachers help, and our family help, and our friends help too.
We see these teachers and adults guiding us every step of the way.
But there's a group of dedicated volunteer leaders that are with us.
We don't see these leaders, and some of us don't know them, but they're there, and they're helping us learn and grow.
Helping us move forward as individual students and a school district. The future has never looked better for Huntsville I S D, and we say.
Thank you, President Wharton.
Thank you, Vice President Stout.
Thank you, Secretary Holland.
Thank you, Mrs. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Langley.
Thank you, Ms. Schweitzer.
Thank you, Dr. Olson Williams.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you. Before we move on with the rest of our recognitions, I would like to publicly thank our friends at Toyota Huntsville for generously donating the gift cards for our board members tonight. Special thanks to David Nimmo, their Director of Operations, and Faith Wyatt, their Community Relations Manager, for making it happen and for their continued support of our school district. We appreciate them for being part of tonight's special presentation. I don't think either of them are here. I thought one of, oh, yes, you are, you are here. Yay. Would y'all stand and let us thank you? Y'all snuck in on me. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you, and they just represent so many of our business and community partners who appreciate the work that you do, so thank you. And thank you both. Moving on to staff recognitions, our first recognition for staff is our H I S D Educator of the Month for January. Please come forward and stand beside me, Amy Durinberger. Ms. Durinberger is currently a fourth-grade E L A teacher at Huntsville Elementary School, where she has proudly bled green for the past fourteen years. Her dedication to the profession and her love for her students has been and continues to be exemplified in her classroom every day. Anytime you walk into her classroom, the learning is evident, and her students are engaged and thriving. She has a true depth of knowledge in the learning process with, which assists her in leading her team with enthusiasm and purpose. She never hesitates to take new student teachers under her wing and be a role model for what quality instruction truly looks and sounds like. Many of those students have since remained to become educators in our district as a result of their wonderful experience at Huntsville Elementary. Ms. Durinberger is always challenging her students to set personal learning goals for themselves, and she makes sure that they're always reaching for their highest potential. When she sees a need for the campus, she does not hesitate to share her ideas for continuous improvement. Ms. Durinberger's professional and positive spirit is contagious, and she is a true role model for students, parents, and staff alike. Huntsville Elementary is honored that she chooses to be part of their school family, and we are very proud that she chooses to build champions with us in H I S D. We are proud to name Amy Durinberger as H I S D's Educator of the Month. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you for my husband to be here with me today. Your love and support is so much to me, coming home to you to vent about my crazy days. I know that's hard to hear sometimes, but I love you, appreciate you. Thank you for my family for coming and surprising me tonight. I know it was a drive for you, so thank you so much. And then I also want to thank Ms. Cross, your leadership is what makes me get through my day. I can't, I tell people every day, leadership is everything, and you are everything to our campus, and you're the reason I stick around so long. So thank you so much. And Ms. Sally Dieter, thank you for jumping on board with us. I appreciate your support every day. Thank you, guys.
Another big congratulations to Amy Durinberger, Huntsville Elementary, H I S D's Educator of the Month. Our next recognition is for the H I S D Employee of the Month for January. Please come forward, Ms. Tammy Elliott. Ms. Elliott is currently a math interventionist at Huntsville Elementary, but honestly, she wears many, many, many more hats than that this school year. Even though she's not homegrown Huntsville, she might as well be because she has spent the last twenty-seven years as an educator in Huntsville I S D and specifically at Huntsville Elementary. She has chosen to spend her life serving and giving back to this community she loves, and we are so blessed that she is here. Whether she's working with students, assisting parents navigate the R T I and five oh four processes, coding students, organizing the spelling bee, scheduling G T testing, working at the loading dock, or serving breakfast, she is always there to give her best and with a caring smile on her face. She carries herself with true professionalism and kindness for everyone she encounters and is always looking for ways to help her school family. Huntsville Elementary knows they would be lost without Tammy Elliott. Ms. Elliott always has and continues to have a positive impact on the climate and culture of Huntsville Elementary School as the ultimate example of perseverance, dedication, commitment, and heart. She truly has the heart of a Hornet. Huntsville Elementary is honored that she chooses to be part of their school family, and we are equally proud to name Ms. Tammy Elliott as H I S D's Employee of the Month for January. Thank you for your flexibility, your positive attitude of doing whatever it takes to make success at H E S. We are thankful you are here building champions with us. Congratulations.
I have my husband here, my son here, and of course, I have my great H E S family here, and I have some outside friends here. And I, again, Ms. Cross, she said it, I mean, you truly drive the ship that we are, and you know, we couldn't do it without you, so I thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations again, Tammy Elliott from Huntsville Elementary, our H I S D Employee of the Month. I'm thinking y'all should just come sit down here for a second for the next thing, so you don't have to go and then get back up. Yeah, so just come sit down here. I'm gonna direct you, I'm gonna direct the board. Just come and have a seat. Our final recognition and presentation is for our T-Class Decision Five residency program. First, we'd like to share a short video on T-Class, the Texas COVID Learning Acceleration Supports Grant and Yearlong Residency Program, and then our Human Resources Department Coordinator, Ms. Dee Dickey, will come forward to make tonight's special staff presentation.
There is a set of funding and targeted supports that T E A, the Texas Education Agency, has developed and designed to help accelerate student learning. It's called the Texas COVID Learning Acceleration Supports, or T-Class. As its name suggests, T E A created these in the wake of COVID and made these state and federal funds available to local education agencies. For districts, T E A provides ten of what they call decision points within T-Class. In this video, we'll focus on Huntsville I S D's utilization of the grant Decision Five, which is classified as a residency program support. This grant required that Huntsville I S D implement a paid teacher residency in partnership with a high-quality educator preparation program and implement innovative staffing models to sustainably fund teacher residency and build educator pipelines. Once established, we were able to access funding to pay for these student-teacher residents and award a mentor-teacher stipend. We're proud of our continuing close working relationship with both the College of Education at Sam Houston State and the E S E six. And we're grateful for their partnership in the effort to bring the T-Class Five to fruition here in Huntsville I S D. So now that you know what T-Class Five means, let's hear from some of the participants here in Huntsville I S D.
My name's Ariana Ramp.
Okay, my name's Riley Door.
I just graduated from Sam Houston State University.
Yes, so I was here for a full year before officially being hired.
I teach special education in a total learning classroom or T L C.
Well, technically, I was hired on before, but officially as a teacher that's certified to teach by myself.
So something great about Sam Houston is they put you in the classroom very early on. So we had Field One, which is one day out of the week, Field Two, which is two days out of the week, and then you start your year-long residency, which is three days, and then the full five days. They said, hey, we have this brand-new program, there's a potential that you could actually be paid to be a student-teacher this year, and I thought that was amazing. We had to fill out lots of forms, we had to do kind of like a Zoom interview, but with yourself, so that all the districts could see it, and then we got to just very patiently wait to hear back of whether or not we got that position.
I was a work-study student throughout my whole time in college. It was only a small amount, and usually it was paycheck to paycheck, but with the paid internship, it helped immensely. I was able to do more with my money saved up. I could actually get more groceries.
First semester, when we were only here three days a week, I did have a second job, and it was very time-consuming. I was constantly going back and forth between work. There'd be days where I left here right at four, and I had to be at my next job by five, and we hoped that that dinner was gonna be in between. But then the second semester, I was here five days a week, I didn't have to worry about that with the paid position, and it took off so much weight off my shoulders, and I was able to really just dive into the class and like learn everything around me instead of worrying about what was I gonna do like here and when I got home.
Traditionally, a student teaching is one semester, so you're only there for a short period of time, and that is it. However, for the year-long residency, you get to know your mentor-teacher, you get to know your students really well, and you're in the classroom every day, pretty much. The first semester, you're there three days out of the week, and then the second semester, you're there every day.
I loved having my student-teacher here for the whole year. I felt like it was a great bonding experience for us, but also for the students. It was very beneficial. I also think that it was beneficial for her because I felt like she was able to see the year from beginning to end.
We get to really have a good idea of what those expectations are for students throughout the entirety of the year.
And I just really enjoyed it, and I got to know the students and get to know who they are and what I can do to best help them in all these situations and all the classrooms.
We get to kind of train them up and then really see them in that first-year teaching and walk alongside them and get to really help them in that first year.
In the year-long residency, you can build a lot more community than one single semester because you get to know the teachers around the school. You get to see them, you get to interact with them. They want to know who you are and want to keep you because they get to see you grow.
She's not afraid to ask questions, she's not afraid to be wrong, but she also has great ideas as well, you know, being fresh out of college, I've learned a lot from her. So I definitely think it's just a partnership.
She's been a wonderful student. The initiative that she has was great. She always had great ideas and brought those ideas to me. She was excited about what she was doing.
The candidates that come out of this program are quality, first-rate candidates. They are eager to learn, they're happy to be here.
For year-long residency was the first time I've been in a Huntsville school, so I didn't really know much about Huntsville I S D. I wasn't sure. For the longest time, I thought I was gonna go home to teach.
The fact that it's a year-long residency is really an opportunity to really build strong relationships.
I really enjoyed the environment and like the community at the school.
Honestly, there's times where I'm sitting there and I'm like, I am the teacher, like this is my class now. I don't have to like check about every little thing, like we can just do it, it's really exciting. I actually talked to myself walking down this hallway this morning, I was like, you are the teacher. Like, you've graduated, you're done, like this is, this is real world now, it's awesome.
Ms. Dee Dickey, please come forward from H R.
Mr. Trey Warden, there you are. And the Board of Trustees, Dr. Shepherd and the Cabinet, and to you, our Huntsville community. Good evening. Because of the T-Class grant, we are able to award a one-time teacher hiring bonus in the amount of $1,000 to any T-Class year-long resident who makes the decision to complete the program and remain employed with the Huntsville Independent School District. And tonight, we have two young ladies, two inspiring educators who have gone through the year-long residency program and are now full-time employees of the district and are well-deserving of this hiring bonus. I'm going to introduce two residency teachers tonight who chose to remain at Huntsville ISD and to complete their cohorts. As I call your name, if you and your campus principal or administrator would come forward to be recognized.
We'll let the board come forward too, so they can congratulate.
Let's give the board opportunity to come forward. Our first recipient is a special education teacher at Scott Johnson Elementary under the administration of Jennifer Barnes, and that is Ms. Arianna Ramp. Our second recipient also is a special education teacher at Stewart Elementary under the administration of Ms. Shannon Williams, and that is Ms. Riley Door. To these young ladies, thank you for your commitment to the district, to the staff, our community, and most importantly, to our students. Our goal is to continue to hire resident teachers like yourselves and continue building champions at HISD, so we say thank you. We'd like to present to you both an honorary bonus check, and Mr. Matt Lahey will take pictures at this time.
And since the, they won't actually take that one, they actually have you for real.
No, they don't. Those are just thank you cards, that will come through.
Thank you so much, I'm so excited. Good luck with that one. It was in your jacket. Thank you for the time. I hope you stay. Stay safe. I'm going, yeah.
It was on their paychecks. Good.
And they did receive that bonus on their paychecks, vouchers today, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That concludes our recognitions. We appreciate you all being here for the special presentations tonight.
I did want to get a quick picture before the break.
We have a group of foreign exchange students that would like to come forward and take a picture with our board. Okay. Okay, take the picture and then do that?
Y'all can stay and watch if you want.
This is a good time to sneak out.
Faith. I'd like to get their picture with the board, too. Do y'all want a picture with them? I told them I'd get them some for us, man. Matthew, do you mind getting their picture with the board, too, before you stop?
I was like, I've been looking for you in a long time. I'm like, I've just given a few guys. And they're like, no.
One, two, three. Awesome. One more. One, two, three.
That's very sweet.
One, two, one, two, three, and then one, two, three. Got it.
And board, stay put. Huntsville Toyota reps would like a picture with y'all, too. How are you? Good to see you.
Keeping you busy?
Always.
Okay, five and a half minutes, we're back. Excellent agenda. Ms. Odom, do we have a public comment?
Yes, we have one that I've put at your spot.
Okay. This is Denise Winston, you come forward for your public comment.
Hi, yes, thank you, guys.
Hang on. And I was gonna do this just so they kind of know what we have to do. Technically, you have three minutes, and the board cannot respond in any way. And Mr. Holland will keep the time, and you'll get a countdown on the Tower of Evil there. All right, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you all for having us. My name is Denise Winston, I'm with ASSC International Student Exchange, and Huntsville's been very gracious to host our students over the, well, I've been with ASSC for seven years, so at least seven years that I know of. This year, we have 11 students from nine different countries represented, and Rotary also has one student from Italy. So total Huntsville has 12 students from 10 different countries. All of our students do presentations across their campus, and they also do community service hours within the community. Since it is School Board Recognition Month, we just wanted to say thank you for allowing our students. There's not many districts that allow three or five students, much less 12, and I do think it's great for our students that are in our high school. They do all want to introduce themselves and tell you where they're from, and we just wanted to say thank you.
Hi, I'm Diana, I'm from Ukraine, and I'm a scholarship student. My scholarship is Future Leaders Exchange, it's sponsored by the U.S. Department of State, and I'm happy to be here in Huntsville High School because I can try a lot of new activities, like tennis, dragon field, and a lot of classes like ceramics, and just meet amazing people here. Thank you.
I'm Esther, I'm from Spain, I'm also a scholarship student, and I wanna thank you all because this year has been one of the greatest experiences in my life. I'm getting to play soccer, that is not so popular for girls in Spain, so it's been an amazing experience. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Sarah, and I'm from Bangladesh. I am a part of Youth Exchange and Study Program, a scholarship student. Thank you for having us. I'm having such an amazing time, I have an amazing host family, and I have such good friends, just thank you for just having us here.
Hi, I'm Samuel Akio from Kenya, I'm with the U.S. Scholarship Program. I'd like to thank you for having us here, and I'm really enjoying my stay here, and I thank the school, and I've been having opportunities to be with the robotics club, and it's really interesting to me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yuan, I come from France, I came with P.E., no association, and I would like to thank you because I think that this is one thing that can happen only once in your life, and the fact that I can live this is just awesome. I've met awesome people as teenagers, as teachers, as my host family, and I want to thank you for that, so thank you so much.
My name is.
My name is Eljhan, I'm from Kazakhstan, I'm a scholarship student, and thank you for the given opportunities to experience living in America.
And real quickly, I just want to introduce Patricia Fisher-Massia, she's the one that deals with the families and the students and the teachers on the day-to-day basis, and she has all of our kids here in Walker County, so thank you all very much again.
And maybe by the time y'all go home, you'll learn how to talk like a Texan. Or maybe they can help us. Okay, next on the agenda is items requiring board action. The first item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Now, that being said, please raise your right hand in favor of, that's seven for zero against, motion passes. Next item on the agenda, is that correct? Is the 2023-2024 instructional school year calendar. Mr. Forney, we need to bring him in some music.
I have my phone, I'll probably play a tune. Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Shepherd, it gives me pleasure to be able to present and share with you the culmination of many hours of work, conversations about putting forth the best calendar for the Huntsville Independent School District. Should have a copy of the information you're packing, and then I'll show at the end, I'll show a copy of the version that the staff members selected. In putting this process together, we communicated with our DAT committee, we met with our DAT committee, members of the Teaching and Learning Division were key parts of this, we got feedback from our campus principals, specifically also our assistant principals during the AP Toolbox, and of course, most recently, on last Wednesday, we put out a survey to have them actually vote for Draft A or Draft B. And so what I want to do tonight is just try to highlight some of the similarities and some of the differences between Calendar A and Calendar B. Of course, state requires that we have 187 days for our contract days for our teachers. Both calendars have a week off for Thanksgiving. Holidays observed include September the 4th, of course Labor Day, October the 9th, I believe that's Columbus Day, January 15th, MLK, February 19th, President's Day, and then March 29th, Good Friday, and of course, on both calendars, the last day of school will be May 23rd. The differences between Calendar A and B in terms of staff returning to school, August 2nd under Calendar A, August the 3rd under B, student first day of school, August the 10th, and then August the 15th under Calendar B, something that was very important to the DAT, specifically to the teachers that were on the DAT committee, that they needed extra time in terms of not starting on a Monday, so they could come in and kind of get their breaths and get ready to go for the week, so we made sure that we paid particular attention to that for the staff members that expressed that in our DAT meetings. The number of pre-service days, our principals gave us a lot of feedback in that area, between our campus days, as well as our district-designated days, where we'll have PD, six for Calendar A, and also B, there are eight days. Student instructional days, of course, 175 for Calendar A, 172 for Calendar B, but the state kind of got away from the actual days, so we go by minutes, and so we have more than enough minutes to meet the 75,600 minutes. For our winter break, this was gonna be what I would consider sort of diametrically different between Calendar A and Calendar B, in that many of the staff members were asking for more time off after the Christmas break, and historically here, we usually have almost five or seven, eight days before Christmas, and prior to Christmas, five days or so, and then after, we typically come back right after the New Year. And so in Calendar B, we put more days on the other side of the New Year, so that they'll have a little bit more time before they come back to work, so that's something real different between Calendar A and Calendar B. And then our PD, Trade Exchange Days this summer, we're gonna be training our staff, specifically our elementary campuses with CKH, Capturing Kids' Hearts, and so with that being said, we're gonna have some days where those who may not be able to come to the training this summer in June and July, and so we have Exchange Days built into it, so that means on those days, if those folks need that additional, those folks that did not catch this summer need those trainings, it'll take place on the two days on the Calendar A or the two under Calendar B. On the next slide, this represents the survey, the brief survey that we sent out on last week to solicit feedback from our staff members in the district, and overwhelmingly, most staff members selected Draft B, and then 64.1%, and then 35.9% selected Draft A. At this time, it's, Odom, could you kind of put a, you could put B up? And then this is a copy, this is a copy of our Draft B calendar. And again, we've studied probably, I know, well over 20, 30, 40 different districts in terms of trying to get the best calendar for Huntsville ISD, but you get to a point of where you can just move the days so many ways, you can move our days, and for the most part, it's pretty consistent with what we've seen out in the field relative to instructional calendars in our area and specifically across the state. It's time, I want to see if we have any questions from the board.
I have a question. Do we have any sense of what the attendance is like, that when we have that half-week before Christmas? Have we done that before, or other districts done that before?
Yes, that's a pretty much common practice. For us, it's going to be new, but in me speaking to, not districts necessarily about the attendance, but we have had conversations with other districts to see how they've handled it, and in conversations that I've had, that hadn't been an issue, but the thing I will say is, the districts that I have communicated with, they have been doing it for some time in terms of us making that switch. But I won't know, of course, until then, but I don't foresee it being, foresee it being. But I won't know, of course, until then, but I don't I don't foresee it being foresee it being an issue. That's a great question.
A couple of things to add to that. I did talk to a couple of leaders from other districts and some parents in other districts that did something similar this year. In reality, what will happen on those days is, you know, at the high school level, they'll be doing finals. So if you've got to take tests, you'll be there. And then at the elementaries, God love you, leaders of the little children out there, you know, going into the holidays, they do a lot of classroom celebrations and and reasons that kids want to be there, right? So the districts that did that for the first time this year did not experience a drop-off. So, for different reasons, right? I mean, that's why I pointed that out. High school, it's going to be a different reason why kids would be there. Elementary, definitely a totally different reason why kids would want to be there the last few days.
And then having them come back for a full week after Christmas isn't going to be culture shock? Or because I know typically we come back on a Thursday and they have a couple of days, and then they have a couple of days off? Was there a concern about that, or?
For the students or the staff?
For the staff.
For the staff. Actually, in the multitude of meetings that we've had, they kind of asked, can we do can we do something a little different on the other side of Christmas and after New Year's? It was it was a request.
It'd be interesting. I know some districts do this too, but to ask other stakeholders besides the teachers to kind of vote, because I think there's a lot of parents who are good and ready for school to start back after Christmas before January 8th. That's like, everyone's got, everyone's balled by then. But anyway, alrighty.
And we do try to capture those folks, you know, those parents on our on our DAC committee, our district advisory committee. And not to mention that the staff members who have kids, who have students in campuses as well.
Any other questions?
So just clarifying, your recommendation is Calendar B.
The people have spoken.
Have a motion, a second.
On behalf of Dr. Shepherd, just want to say congratulations to our board. We really appreciate everything you guys do to help our students and definitely are making a difference in Huntsville ISD. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, and we haven't discussed it anymore, but I'm going to say this. I say B. I don't want a mutiny. So if that many people voted for it, I'm with that. So that being said, raise your right hand if you're in favor of Calendar B. B seven four zero against. Motion passes. That's why I asked you at the last meeting, what do the teachers want? Next item on the agenda is the considered board approval of the annual financial report. Mr. Brown and Mr. Heineman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to begin by saying this annual financial report is the culmination of a lot of work from both district staff and the Davis Heineman and Company. I appreciate the many hours my staff have helped me by providing information and answering questions during this process. I reviewed the report, and we are pleased with the final product. I will now turn it over to Kyle Heineman to discuss the report with you.
Good evening. I'll briefly highlight some of the events from this year's audit report. The financial statements in this report present fairly in all material respects the financial position and changes in financial position for the district for the year ended August 31st, 2022. Our opinion was unmodified, and that is the opinion that you want to receive. During the year, the district added about $7.3 million of capital assets. These included building improvements and new construction, as well as new equipment and vehicles. The district reduced principal outstanding debt by 5.7 million. This includes retiring in whole the lease revenue bonds of the Public Facility Corporation. The district's online school, TOPS, at the end of the year, it had an enrollment of 8,590 students, and it had an adjusted ADA for the students that completed these courses of 8,361. This was an increase of 81% for enrollment and an increase of 186% for the adjusted ADA. The adjusted ADA is primarily due to K-12 doing additional things to make sure that they had students pass at the high school level and making sure if they needed three classes, they would pass those three classes to get full credit. And so that was 62% completion percentage in 2021, and it went all the way to 97% in 2022. So that was the reason for the large increase in the ADA. The government-wide statements are presented on the full accrual method of accounting, and they account for the all the activities of the district. Under this method, the district increased its net position by $22.8 million. The district ended the year with a net position of $44.4 million. Of this amount, though, only about $5.9 million is unrestricted and available for the general operations of the district. The governmental funds, and those are presented on the current, the modified accrual method of accounting, and that's how the district budgets, how everything, you know, you run your operations or plan to run the district. The governmental funds increased their fund balances by about $10.5 million during the year. This was primarily due to the fund balance increase in the general fund of $8.4 million. And some of the factors leading to the general fund increases were the unexpected ADA increases from TOPS, as well as some employee positions that were not filled during the year. The ending general fund fund balance was $39.2 million, and $39.1 million of that is unassigned. That amount is about 26% of the budgeted expenditures for the 2223 fiscal year. And that includes all of the budgeted expenditures, including TOPS. And so this amount well exceeds the district's threshold for the minimum fund balance policy. The debt service fund increased its fund balance by $858,000, primarily due to some state revenue that was not expected. And also, there is debt issue costs that you did not incur due to the the bonds not being issued until after year end. The general fund finished with total revenues about $2 million less than the final budget and total expenditures of $10.4 million less than the final budget. These variances were primarily a result of budgeting TOPS completion rate at 100%. And again, those completion rates came in at about 97%. Also, there are some budgeted employee positions that were not filled. During the year, the district had no financial statement findings or federal award findings or question costs during the audit period. And after after year end, we'll kind of look at what's happening in the current year. The district issued the remaining $36.5 million of school building bonds in November 2022, and these will be used for new buildings and improvements throughout the district. Even with this issuance, there's no anticipated increase in the INS tax rate to meet the debt service requirements. Looking forward to the end of the 2023 year for the general fund, the general fund budgeted to keep the fund balance the same, based on the original adopted budget. The district also decreased the M&amp;O tax rate from 91.49 cents to 89.75 cents. The INS tax rate remained the same for the 2223 fiscal year. And TOPS was a large driver to the fund balance increase in 2022. The enrollment has decreased compared to what was originally budgeted and projected. And as a result, it's unlikely that the general fund will see some of the same increases that they saw in in the 2022 year. But again, it was originally passed as a balanced budget, so, you know, the district still expects to to perform well over the next year. Are there any questions?
Everybody's been to accounting class, so glassy-eyed. No, thank you, sir. Did you have a question, Ken? Okay. So I know that. I was going to say something. Mr. Brown, I appreciate your leadership on this over the last few years because we are in a completely different situation than we were. So thank you very much, sir. I do need a motion to pass. I have a motion. I have a second from Miss Stout. So all in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven four zero against. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is the report discussion items. The first five items are written reports in your agenda packet. And then the last item is the TCLAS Decision Five Grant Update. Mr. Morales. He needs a walk-up song, too.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Shepherd. I just want to take a second to say thank you guys for all that you've done for our employees. And this, what I'm about to discuss tonight, is yet another example of what your support has done to grow our workforce. Tonight, I am presenting an overview of what is called the T-Class Grant. More specifically, I will focus on what is called the Decision Five Support part of it. In 2021, TEA rolled out the Texas COVID Learning Acceleration Supports Grant Application, known as T-Class. This grant established a set of targeted supports and additional state and federal funding that aligned with the learning acceleration framework. And, you know, as Matt's video that we saw earlier, it highlights the the people part of it. But what I'm going to do is kind of go into the details of the actual grant. These supports that were created focused on catching students up academically due to the learning loss that occurred during the pandemic. These supports, including creating a teacher pipeline that would recruit highly qualified teachers, it created, it offered a rigorous instructional materials component to it, and it gave students most in need of this support more time to learn, including the summer, and included tutoring to go along with that. The grant offered, well, it actually targeted 10 areas of support called decision points. As a district leadership team, we looked at this, reviewed these points, and had many discussions about it. And we agreed to apply for the following supports. Decision Decision Two, which is the high-quality instructional materials support part. Decision Three, the supplemental instructional approved products portion of that. Decision Five, which was the residency program support, which I'll go over. And Decision Six, which is the vetted Texas Tutors Core Program Support. The district was approved for this grant and was awarded over $1.2 million to be used from 2021 to 2024. My focus tonight will be on the T-Class Decision Five, the residency program. This grant required that we work with a high-quality educational preparation program of what we call EPP. Lucky for us, we have Sam Houston State University in our backyard, and they have year in and year out continued to produce outstanding educators. In addition, they had already established a year-long non-paid residency program with us, and we had been a part of that for a year or so before this started. This grant also required that HISD be able to create a staffing model that would support the residency teacher program after the grant funding expires in 2024. By doing so, HISD would build a pipeline of teachers that we could that we could recruit from on an ongoing basis. It is in this area of strategic staffing that Region Six has offered its support. So what is a residency program? Well, basically, a teacher residency program is where a teacher candidate is paired with an experienced, highly effective mentor teacher for a full year of clinical training or co-teaching in a K-12 classroom. With this grant, the resident teacher will receive a stipend during this year-long residency. Both the district and the university share responsibility for the preparation, the support, and the success of the residency teacher. It is estimated residency programs have increased by 75% over the last seven years. But I can tell you that many districts that did not take advantage of this grant when it began are now looking to pay their student teachers in some form. So this is an idea whose time has not only come, but it's going to stick around for a while. So the day of paying student teachers is now upon us. So from Decision Five, the support part of it, we we were awarded in HR $375,000 to be used in the course of three years. We selected five residency teacher slots for each year. As you can see, some of the major expenditures are is the living stipend, which is $20,000 for two semesters for each teacher, residency teacher, a mentor stipend of $1,000 for, you know, for two semesters. And those are experienced teachers that are selected and vetted out from our workforce that we use to mentor these residency teachers. And then the training that that is, we are working with Region Six to develop that. And so we do have the funds for that. And you saw tonight, as part of this grant, that we set up a $1,000 bonus for hiring any residency teacher that wants to stay with us. So you saw that play out tonight. So what what I might say is that this whole thing started about a year ago, when they finally rolled out the application and we were approved. We had just a short amount of time right before Christmas to get this rolling. And the first cohort that Ms. Ramp and Ms. Nure were a part of started in January. And then by December, this December, they finished their first two semesters and stuck around. And I want to go over the other cohorts in just a second. Creating this program and making it a success takes teamwork. HISD has worked collaboratively with state agencies throughout this effort, as seen on this slide. Each of these agencies and individuals has played a role in offering support. Sam Houston State University has also vetted these candidates very thoroughly. They offer us these these elected candidates who actually want to be with us in a timely manner. And then they are also offer the ongoing supervision and support of these candidates. And, you know, so I can't say enough about what they do with their teacher prep program. This is yet again another success story that they have. So I'm excited to be partnered with them in yet again another effort like this. Region Six has also stepped up. We're working with Dr. Lopez and Mr. Jeets to develop that strategic staffing. Their support has been just invaluable. I'll go over that in just a second as well. From a district standpoint, teamwork has also made this program a success. As you can see, the departments that that are involved in this, my team, Ms. Dickey oversees this effort, has been doing a great job of, you know, collaborating, working with not just the two entities of Region Six and SAM, but also with the other departments. Mr. Brown and his team have worked with us and guided us and, you know, basically allowing us to to work with five, I guess what you would call FTEs or full-time employee slots. And then he'll be continuing to work with us as we look at strategic staffing, how do we fit that in the budget moving forward. Lea Kavolchik, I can't say enough. She's with our federal programs and oversees the grants. She has worked tremendously to oversee how we're spending our money, to monitor that, keep us compliant, and keep us updated of any anything that the state is throwing at us that we need to to do. Angie Andrews, with the Counterbeing Assessment, as you can see, is part of the committee. She's also going to step up and and work with us on building in-house training for our teachers. So as you can see, the committee members there, again, are district level. If you're here tonight, could you please stand up just so we can recognize you? Dr. Johnson. Josh, me. Give him a big hand, Earl. And I will say one thing, you don't hear a lot about this, only because this kind of embedded itself in yet another thing we do with so much going on. So I'm just happy that I do have time tonight to go over this. I've been wanting to get this in front of you in detail for a while. But in the meantime, you can see it's many people are working on this as we go. We basically did build the plane in the air, and so it and it's working. From the campus standpoint, you can see that just about every campus has participated. And you have to keep in mind that the residency, the paid residency for a year is just one pipeline. We still have non-paid residents. We have single semester student teachers. We have the the methods kiddos coming in. We still have non-paid residents, we have single semester student teachers, we have the, uh, the methods kiddos coming in and, and, you know, do, students doing observations. So there are other, other pipelines that are still there for us to recruit from, but this is, this is just another one. So when we started this, as you can see, we, we're, the grant allowed us to have three cohorts. Cohort A, as you can see, began in the spring of twenty-two, which was a year ago, and con, concluded this last semester in the fall. Something unexpected happened at, uh, last semester in that Sam Houston candidates said, can you, can you take more? Well, we put our heads together and decided to overlap the cohorts. Said we can't take more, but we can start the second cohort earlier. And so we overlapped them. So in essence, we had ten residency teachers this last semester. And so as you can see, Cohort B is in its second semester. Then Cohort C is now overlapping them right now and will conclude in the, at the end of this year. So in essence, we have, uh, we kind of doubled up, right? And that's allowed because we do have the funds to do that. It was an interesting development because really what we're doing is that we took, uh, we took on ten instead of five. It still works. As you can see and was alluded to by, I think, Ms. Ramp in the video, um, the, their first co, the cohort's first semester consists of three days per week on a campus. And then the other two days are spent on the university, at the university doing the program requirements. The second semester is a full five days on the campus. And so they're embedded into the culture of that campus and, and supports as, as needed by the, by the teacher, uh, mentor teacher. The benefits to the district and to the residency teacher are impactful. Participation in this type of program helps to reduce teacher turnover for multiple reasons. Preparation and ongoing support, mentoring from an experienced teacher, experience gained in working directly with students, and getting paid throughout the year. As you can see, that, it really is the big piece and couldn't have, I can't say it any better than what you heard in the video from both, not just the mentor teacher, but especially the students. It's very impactful. From our standpoint as a district, the district can better acclimate the residency teacher to the social culture of the campus and we can use a residency teacher as a sub pair or tutor. This gives the district a recruiting pipeline, as I've alluded to, and it builds professional and leadership capacity in our mentor teachers. And, and I've got other benefits there as well. So, but I think Ms. Ramp is the one that really kind of nailed it when it came to, you know, how it benefits them and what they're able to gain from this experience. With Region Six support, uh, on the strategic staffing model, one of the requirements is that we, we sustain this effort at least for one year after the grant funds end. But obviously, when you have something like this going, you want to keep it going. So I'll be working with Mr. Brown and Earl and the committee members to finalize the, uh, the staffing plan and model as we go. Matter of fact, I plan to roll out a few things at leadership this month to show the principals what's coming. And some of the things that we're working on include the, you know, what the teacher stipend will look like and then what the mentor teacher stipend will look like moving forward. And then the job descriptions that are gonna be specific to both, not just the teacher, but also the mentor. That way a campus principal knows the expectations ahead of time of what exactly is this gonna look like in the future as we embed this into our culture. So here's a timeline that was created by TEA. And the, the timeline of the T-Class Grant is broken down by implementation of the residency program and the staffing model design and implementation. With the ongoing help of Sam Houston State University, uh, Region Six and district personnel, the T-Class Fire Decision, the T-Class Decision Five Residency Support has been an effective and positive addition to HISD. And as you can see, with the addition of Ms. Ramp and Ms. Doer, the students of HISD will benefit tremendously from the addition of highly-prepared first-year teachers. And I would just conclude by saying, this is the absolute most fun part of my job, is to see what you saw tonight. Because when I first met them, I can just tell you in all my experience, you are looking at two bona fide rock stars. And then when you have Ms. Park and Ms. Her.
Laura.
Laura. I can't, yeah, I can do that. So when you have two experienced veteran teachers like that and you put them and pair them with two aspiring, exciting youngsters, guys, this is win, 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 win. Okay? You cannot lose with this model. So your support of this has been, you know, like I said before, uh, has allowed us to increase our workforce with that quality. So we hope to sustain that. This concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, once we get this in, is it, once we run out of the funding, I would imagine it's really a budgetary issue more than I think every campus would want to have any number of these teachers. Would that be correct?
Yes.
And we can support that, but it's more of a dollars.
It is. So when we started this from the very beginning, we were allowed to have up to twenty residency teachers. But with that, you have to figure a way to embed that into your budget at long-term. So in discussion with Mr. Brown, looking at budgets down the road, we decided to start small. And so I think that was a great idea. So, uh, now, that said, that's what we're working on in what we call a zero-impactive budget, meaning that if we can absorb this in a way that it doesn't cost us a lot of money, if any, that's really what we're after. And that's where we're getting support from Region Six. We've also met with other districts, uh, so we're gonna continue those meetings. And we have to do, we do have to come up with a plan and then present that and then move forward with it. But that is the goal, to have zero impact. And if you can create a model like that, yes, you can increase as you go with, with zero impact.
What would be the goal of number of residences that we could have each year that we would be targeting?
I mean, you can have as many as you can afford. There's no, and, and as many as kiddos you can, that you, that will come to your district. So twenty was the, the number that the state allowed us to get under the grant. So, you know, that's, if you want to baseline it, I would say twenty. But again, your district needs determine, you know, what you can do.
And then another follow-up, how many can Sam use to provide?
Well, I wish they were here tonight. I, I know they put over two hundred kiddos out every semester at minimum. Uh, but of course, we share that with districts south of us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One in particular that's close.
But we, I think it's an opportunity for us, we have that ability for them to stay here.
Absolutely.
Have their mentors right next door to, at the university.
Yes.
It's a, it's a win-win for all of us.
It's a home field advantage, you know, type of deal, but, and yes, you're right.
I would consider it, even if, I like the, the aspect that you want to do a zero impact, but even if we do have to invest, I, I would look at it as an investment.
Another way to the zero impact, of course, I mean, we don't want to be like spending more than we have for something like this, but we spend a lot of money recruiting new and training new teachers. So if we can recruit them this way and then they're trained while they're working for that, um, stipend or, you know, whatever, instead of a salary, then, I mean, it'd be interesting to compare the cost of hiring. I mean, you could probably come up with something. What's the cost of hiring and training a new teacher for the first year?
It's expensive.
Yeah, and what, and what do you get for that? And, and what, what things can sometimes, they're innovative and stuff, but what could be lost sometimes in classroom management for a novice? And what, what impact does that have on a classroom? So to me, it just seems like, yeah, like there's, it's very well, a very worthwhile investment, I think. Then you have people that are much more prepared to, to take on a, a, a job.
And, and if you get a chance, I would say that, that you can't put a price on this, but if you'll visit with the two young ladies that we met with tonight, that, that we present tonight, if you would just actually sit and talk to them, you, you can see that their preparedness and excitement, uh, their energy enthusiasm has not been drained by having to work an extra job during their student teaching, that it has allowed them to grow at levels that I had not anticipated. So for me to actually see that transformation from, you know, the non-paid to a paid, it's really impactful. So you almost start to see things that you couldn't see unless you actually saw it for yourself. You can't understand it till you see the, the impact.
Right, because if we just tried a program like this without a grant, we would think, oh, we can't afford to pay them. Right, but then you think maybe you can't afford not to.
Correct.
Because what do you get from that? And do you retain people, you know, better? And then you don't have to train as many and recruit as many.
And, and I alluded to this because this is a real thing, that other districts have seen those of us who have gone through the grant and are, it's too late for them to get the grant money, but yet they're coming with, up with innovative ways that make this more competitive now because they, they're having to figure a way to fund, to do very thing you just said. And we're all paying attention, so, yeah, it's happening all, all around us.
It's great, exciting.
All right. Any other comments? You can walk back over. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is our next meeting. It would be February sixteenth, all the trustees, okay with, that's a normal fourth Thursday of the month. Correct? Okay. Third. Third, four, same. And it's not on, it's not on Valentine's Day, so we don't get out of that, so. All right, uh, that being said, the time is, uh, seven twenty-three. We will go into closed session and there will be a, uh, action item coming out of it. So, thank you.
Ready?
Time is eight forty-one. We're back from closed session. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, we do. Um, I move that the board approve the superintendent's evaluation and contract renewal with a standard one-year extension through February fourth, two thousand twenty-six.
Do I have a second? I have a second with Ms. Schweitzer. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven four, none against, motion passes.
His cheering section's here.
I need another motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anybody's second. Everybody's in favor of that. The time is eight forty-two. Thank you.